Hello everyone, welcome to this meeting of the Planning Panel which is being held at Civic Offices and being streamed to the Council's YouTube channel. I'm councillor Stephen Brown, Chair of the Planning Committee and Chair of tonight's panel. Members of the panel are present tonight and I will ask them to introduce themselves shortly along with the officers. For those present tonight please be aware that we are not expecting a fire alarm this evening and the event the alarm sounds please exit the building by your nearest exit and meet outside as indicated by the marshals. I'll now ask the councillors and officers to introduce themselves, we'll start on this side please.
Councillor Leomansky, Member of the Panel.
Councillor Saskis Oden and a member of this panel.
Good evening councillor Keith McLean, Vice Chair of the Planning Committee and Member of the Panel this evening.
Councillor Sophie Bell, Member of the Panel.
Lauren Bradwell, Planning Officer.
Hannah Hayward, Planning Officer.
Sonia James, Planning Officer.
Paul Keane, Team Leader.
Thomas Bowden, Head of Legal Services.
George Vincent.
Thank you very much everyone. We have three planning applications to consider this evening, I will describe for the benefit of all how we will conduct the meeting. For each application, the planning officer will introduce the application, where there are presentations these will be displayed on the screens in the room and on the recording. I will invite those who've registered to speak in advance of the meeting to come forward. Officers will then deal with any points of clarification from councillors following the presentation. I will move the recommendation in the report and invite a member of the committee to second, this does not indicate that either of us support the proposal but allows us to debate the matter. I will then invite committee members to raise any points of debate and each member will have up to three minutes to speak. To be clear to members of the public present and online, for all applications we will only be considering material planning matters as set out in planning law. If any amendments are proposed they must be moved and seconded and then voted upon. Once all contributions have been made I will sum up and take a vote on the motion or amended motion. I would ask all participants to keep their contributions so they are lost at time and speak only when invited to do so by the Chair. If legal advice is required at any stage I will ask the council's legal representative to comment. Voting will be conducted by a show of hands, if a recorded vote is requested a vote will be taken by name. For the benefit of the members of the public, just to reference use of electronic devices by committee members, if we are using them it is generally to access agendas online or access other background or policy documents. Introduction is done, we'll move on to the agenda, first apologies, George do you have any apologies for this evening?
Nothing's been received Chair.
Thank you very much, declarations of interest, do any councillors wish to disclose any interests? Councillors should declare any disclosable pecuniary interests, other registrable interests or non-registrable interests including other pecuniary interests they may have in the business to be transacted and officers to disclose any interests they may have in any contract to be considered. Councillor McLean.
Yeah, thank you very much Chair, I am predetermined on the third application 6C and will be speaking in favour of it and will leave the chamber after that.
Do you mean 5B councillor?
Pardon?
Do you mean 5B?
Sorry, 5C, the second one, Karasaliononi, I beg your pardon, misread it.
Thank you very much, anyone else? Anything to say? Lovely, item four, public participation questions, George have we received any questions not related to items on this evening's agenda?
None received Chair.
Thank you very much, in that case we will get straight on to the applications, 5 early which is Colly Hill in Bradwell and ask Lauren to introduce her report please.
Key considerations are the change of use to a C2 children's home would see a shortfall of one allocated parking space. However, this is not materially different from the existing C3 use requiring two allocated parking spaces on plot where only one is currently accommodated. And the application is for approval, thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, we have two speakers registered in objection to this application, so when I call your name please can you join us on the chamber floor, sitting on the table on my right, your left. You'll have three minutes to speak and I will try to let you know when there are thirty seconds remaining, I can ask for councillor Bradburn to come up first please.
Thank you Chair, as Wardcouncillor I called this application in after a number of residents contacted me with genuine concerns about how this change of use might affect their day-to-day lives. I do want to start on a positive note, MC Living has a good reputation and a caring ethos, I know they see Bradwell as an attractive place for their work. It's got a low crime rate, good accessibility and a strong village character. All those qualities make Bradwell a great place to live and that's something we're rightly proud of. However, even the most well-run homes must be in the right setting and it's the specific context of this property that the concerns arise. Colly Hill is a narrow, tightly packed terrace of family homes where sound and movement carry. While the applicant says the home will operate much like any family household, in practice a twenty-four hour staffed use brings shifts changes, visiting professionals and vehicle movements at irregular hours. That's not the same as a typical household and it risks harming neighbours' peace and privacy which is contrary to policy D5 on residential amenity. Parking is another genuine issue, the property has only one allocated space, yet at least two carers will be on shift at any time plus managers and visitors. Those extra vehicles will inevitably park on already narrow streets. Under policy CT2 particularly point six, development should not generate traffic that compromises the safety or convenience of other road users. Residents already describe vehicles mounting pavements restricted visibility and difficulties for delivery vans and emergency access. This is exactly the kind of real-world highway pressure that CT2 and CT10 are designed to prevent. Several residents have also highlighted that no waste management plan has been provided. If commercial waste bins are required they would need to be stored at the rear of the property effectively removing its only parking space. Further undermining the officer's conclusion that the impact is comparable to a family dwelling. Policy HN3 asks that supported housing fits appropriately into its surroundings and avoids harming local character and in my view this proposal doesn't achieve that. The report refers to another children's home within a mile but in fact it's about zero point two miles away. That's close enough for residents to feel a real cumulative impact. While the applicant says that proximity helps with staffing, HN3 is about community impact and not operational convenience. I recognise the 2023 ministerial statement on supporting looked-after children and I fully agree with its spirit, these homes are vital but it also says they should be supported where appropriate. With this location's parking constraints, narrow roads and proximity to another care home I don't think this is one. I'm not opposing MC Living or the principle of children's homes but we must apply Plan MK policies fairly. In this case the proposal conflicts with policies D5, CT2 particularly point six, CT10 and HN3. It risks harm to neighbourhood amenity, adds to parking and safety pressures and could undermine the local character of Bradwell. On behalf of my residents I ask members to give full weight to these local impacts before deciding, thank you.
Thank you very much and if Roger Bird could make his way down please.
Good evening, I say here today not because I'm against children or against care, in fact I think then everyone here would agree that we all share the same wish that children should feel safe, supported and loved. But what I want to actually talk about is where and how that support's provided. Placing a category two children's home right in the middle of three terraced houses is just not really the right choice. A children's home is not the same as a single family household and by its very nature in its professional care setting operating as an institution within a residential street. This means shifting staff patterns coming and going at all hours, increased vehicle movements and the inevitable noise and disruption that will come with it. In a row of three terraced houses where walls are shared and gardens back onto each other, those effects are actually magnified. Families who bought their homes did so and believe they were moving into a stable quiet neighbourhood. We must also think about the children placed in such homes, they deserve the privacy and the dignity and the space that comes with it. In an appropriate setting and not to be placed in the middle of a narrow row of two houses where their lives are constant display and neighbours frustrations might unintentionally but will almost inevitably make them feel unwelcome. This isn't fair to them and it isn't fair to the families next door either. Now this isn't about me saying not in my backyard, this is about me saying let's get it right. There are more suitable locations, more suitable properties with more space and fewer shared walls facilities that match the needs of both children and the staff. To squeeze such a facility into the middle of three terraced homes is a poor compromise for everyone involved. I ask you to see it from both sides, families have the right to acquire and enjoy their home. Vulnerable children have the right to live somewhere truly stable. By putting the children's home here we risk undermining both of those in my eyes. Let's work together and make it work in the right and best possible scenario without compromising the lives of the families who have built their homes there, thank you.
Thank you very much, the writing reply has been offered to the applicant or their agents, I've been advised they're not exercising it here. However, if they have decided to change their mind then speak now or forever hold your peace. No, okay, in that case do the officers wish to offer any points of clarification? No, we can move straight on to questions from the councillors. Do the councillors have any questions of clarification for the officer and can I remind you all to try and deal with clarification before we move into debate? Councillor Keane.
Thank you, thank you for your contributions from the objectors. My question is in relation to the Milton Keynes City Council childcare provision response which in request a guarantee of nomination right for MKCC as a preferred referer is required to enable the council to meet its corporate sufficiency duty. I don't see a condition there, is that because it's not appropriate or legal to do something like that because it seems unsensible?
Who wants to answer that one?
Yeah, so it's not a material planning consideration that we can consider.
Thank you, therefore could we put an informative there that we would prefer it to be occupied by children from Milton Keynes?
That we can do that, absolutely, make an inch.
Does, for clarification, does that mean we need to pass an amendment when we get to debate to include that or can we just include it in the minutes?
Unless of course Chair you're satisfied for us to delegate that matter to us.
I'm more than happy to delegate that view. Any other questions from the councillors, councillor Bell?
Yeah, so I appreciate one of the major concerns is the parking situation. I get that obviously the two staff cars is not that different to having two parents living in a family home and that would be kind of equivalent to if it was under or two adults living in the home which would be kind of equivalent to its current use. But my question is obviously the level of visitors that you might get attached with this property, that could be substantially more than you might expect from a typical family dwelling. If you've got managers visiting frequently during the week and you've got other professionals, social workers and all that visiting frequently during the week because we know that obviously children in care will have a lot of statutory visitors visiting them whilst they're in these placements. So I wanted to ask whether that's something that's in your opinion would outweigh the idea that it's comparable to traditional family use because you maybe wouldn't expect quite so many frequent visitors popping in and out in a regular family home as you would with this typically?
So we would still base it based on the requirements in the parking SPD which I think just require at least one visitor space for a C2 use and I think it's very similar for a C3 residential home use as well. So I think regardless of however many visitors there are as long as there is some form of visitor parking available then the frequency is not really something that we consider as such.
Just to sort of cut back on that bit, surely given it's not sufficient in terms of permanent spaces and it's not got two spaces like you'd expect for a typical house in this location I get that obviously because it was built without that we can't expect there to be a second space added on the site because that's impractical. But when considering that sort of off-site provision that there would have been with that house as well for visitor parking that would be sort of the space on-site and the one off-site visitor's parking space kind of, but with this we'd need three, so it's slightly more than...
No, so we would still only have, because there's two carers, so we would still only need two on-plot allocated parking spaces plus one visitor space which is the same as the existing use, it needs to have two allocated parking spaces plus a visitor space, so it's comparable those two uses.
If I may add to that, comparable in the sense that there's an existing shortfall, so there's one parking space as you have shown on the presentation but as Lauren says it's the same shortfall, same requirement, same shortfall and therefore the parking stress is a very similar situation to the existing.
Is that sufficient or do you have a follow-up? Okay, any other questions? Any other questions from the councillors? Okay. In that case, we'll move on to the debate. So I propose the recommendation for debate, which is item 5A, which is that permission be granted, subject to the conditions set out in the main report. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman McLean. Who would like to speak first on this motion?
Yeah, I think, I completely understand the points that have been raised around levels of noise, but I think in the fact that, when you're actually looking at the numbers of who would, how many people would be actually living there, I think it feels like it might be maybe not as bad as expected. But I think the main point, when I was reading through this, is that idea that even though there is a change in use, the shortfall of parking was already there. It's not a case of, like, this coming in has drastically changed the parking situation. I also understand that the point that Councilor Bell raised about maybe frequency, but as it was kind of clarified, that you can't necessarily measure that in the same way, it's just kind of the core numbers. So yeah, I think with the conditions in place, I'm supportive of the application.
Thank you very much. Councilor Montague?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm minded to vote in favour of it too. I just thought I'd put a couple of points down. I hear the points around parking and it being in the middle of a residential street and the comings and goings, et cetera. My feeling is that those arguments could be cut and pasted to more or less any street in Milton Keynes, and if we accepted them as material enough to reject an application, we would never approve another children's care home, so I don't see them as material enough. I did also just want to address, is it Mr Bird? The points he made around working together and having a joined-up process, it's just worth saying out loud, we have a very narrow scope in this meeting to either reject or approve this particular planning application for this particular building, and what you described would be a really nice process, but it's not what's in front of us today. We have to either approve or reject this particular building, and so we have to take it on its merits, and on that basis, I think I'm in favour.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to contribute? No? Okay, well, I will, yeah, add a couple of thoughts, and then sum up, and we'll move to the vote. Yeah, as Councilman Montague said, if we were to accept, well, A, we can't really accept the parking as an objection, because it's not increasing the parking burden as per the policies that we have set out, and it would be equivalent pretty much everywhere in Milton Keynes. And the idea that there is increased traffic because of the care workers working shift patterns feels flimsy, given that lots of people in Milton Keynes work shift patterns. We have quite a lot of employment around the distribution hubs where people work in shift patterns, so this doesn't, by definition, increase the amount of traffic that a residential home might have because of people working shift patterns and coming in, or what might be termed non-standard hours. And I think sort of comments about assuming that a care home is going to have children in it that behave differently from other children and are more noisy and causing more trouble is not something that I think any of the corporate parents in this room would endorse as a reason or an assumption that we would make about the looked-after children in Milton Keynes, so that's not something we can sort of take on board either. So with that, I will move to the vote. George, can you take the vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillors, please, could I ask you to raise your hand if you're in favour of the motion? And now, any against? And any abstentions? Thank you. So it's four in favour, Chair, zero against, one abstention.
Thank you very much. In that case, the motion is carried, approval is given, and we will move on to the next item 5B, and I will ask Sonia to introduce this report, please.
The proposal is to increase the roof pitch to provide accommodation in the roof for two extra bedrooms with en suite, and also extra living accommodation at the bottom ground floor with dormer bungalows to the front and rear. This is a site location plan, showing it in context with all the surrounding buildings. The photo on the left shows the front elevation of the current bungalow. The photo on the right, the rear elevation. The photo, this photo on the left, shows the view from within the conservation area to which this site is adjacent, and the right-hand photo shows another view of the rear elevation facing towards number one near-town. The photo on the left is the house, the rear of the house is on Palmer's Road, and the other photo shows the view from the rear garden at One Palmer's Road. The left-hand photo is from Four East Street, showing the current bungalow elevation, side elevation, and the one on the right is from Six A East Street, showing the rear elevation from the patio at Six A East Street. And these two photos show the bungalow from One near-town, which is the most, the property that's mostly impacted by this proposal. And then we've got the site layout, showing the proposed roof plan and parking, the existing and proposed elevations at the front, and then we have the existing and proposed rear and side elevations, and then we have the existing floor plan and the proposed floor plan. And as you can see from the proposed floor plan at ground floor level, there is accommodation on the ground floor for bedrooms and en suites to provide accommodation for disabled or people with limited mobility. And then it's providing two bedrooms in the roof. And then they also propose a cycle store on the front driveway, which is encouraging use of cycling. And then the separation distances from the front and rear dormers to the surrounding The main considerations is it still provides ground floor accessible accommodation, retains the existing footprint of the dwelling, meets the parking standards, and there's no additional impact to residential amenity or harm to the character or setting of the adjacent conservation area.
Thank you very much. We have one registered speaker in support of this application, which is Councilman McLean, so I could ask you to step forward. You know the drill.
Firstly, I'd like to thank Sonia for a comprehensive report that's considering all the material planning implications. Very helpful. I've known Sam and Ed Harper for many years. In fact, Ed alleges he played rugby with me, so he must be older than he looks. I supported Sam and Ed with a previous property alteration in another part of the ward, and again with this one. Colleagues will have noted that the application tabled was one previously, and it was then withdrawn in spring this year. They then sought pre-planning advice, which was delivered in July, and following that advice, they tabled the new application that you are to consider this evening. This application reflects the pre-planning advice, and the report from the planning office is positive, as they've addressed some of the issues that were considered before they withdrew the previous application. Perhaps the only thing that Sam and Ed got wrong was they should have got pre-planning advice before submitting the first application, and wouldn't be here having to go through their second application. So all I want to do is urge the panel to follow the officer's recommendation and grant planning permission. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much. As is normal, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room before we proceed further. Right, now he's gone, we can talk about him. Do the officers have any points of clarification to that? Do any members of the council want to?
I take the point that we are retaining the two downstairs bedrooms and the associated bathrooms. Hypothetically, would planning permission be required to get rid of those bedrooms or bathrooms in the future if somebody decides to just knock wall downs internally, walls down internally, or change a bathroom into it? You see the point I'm trying to ask? Don't know who I'm asking.
The answer's no, but...
That's a good answer? That is the answer? That is the answer? Thank you.
Yeah, they can. They can do it.
Yes, please. For context, that's completely correct. You know, you can do any internal alterations without planning permission to residential property, including conversion of the roof, which I think, you know, is detailed in the report as a material consideration. So it kind of goes both ways in answer to your question at any time. Those bedrooms could be used for a dining room or any other room on the ground floor, but equally, so could the existing property, the existing bungalow, be converted within loft space?
Is that complete, please?
It's the answer to the question I asked. Yeah.
Any other questions or clarifications from the councillors? No? Fair enough. We'll move on to the debate. I propose the recommendation that 5B, the permission be granted, subject to the conditions set out in the main report. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Councilor Bell. Who would like to speak in debate on this piece, then? Councilor Bell?
Yeah, I mean, I think in, as far as applications go, this is fine. I get what Leah is saying about there's nothing stopping the bedrooms being converted into, say, dining rooms downstairs, but then, obviously, the space is still there, so if somebody else wanted to go and occupy it in the future, they could easily turn it, reconfigure it back into bedrooms. The space, we know that this property has the space for there to be bedrooms and bathrooms downstairs, as well as living space, so from that point of view, I'm sort of satisfied that it's, there's still an opportunity for people with access needs to occupy the property in the future. And I think it's really important to have provision of sort of larger family homes that are accessible for people, because, you know, because it's, a lot of accessible homes tend to be on this sort of smaller bedroom scale of things, and obviously, people that have access needs also have families. You've got increasing percentages of elderly residents as well with mobility issues, wanting to live with their younger, with their children and grandchildren in multi-generational living as well, and this would make, this sort of property would be ideal for these, families in these sorts of situations. And from a sort of conservation area point of view as well, I think the proposals look a lot better than what's currently there. So in terms of impact on the setting of the conservation area, I think this matches what you'd see in the vernacular architecture in the area a little bit more than what's current, what the property that's currently there. So it will actually slightly improve the view of the streetscape from the conservation area, looking out, so that's a mild improvement. And although, obviously, it's going up a story, given the sort of the reef start and the fact that this is kind of building into a, almost like a half-story building into the reef, it is not going to make a massive meaningful difference to the height of the property either, so in that vein of things, I'm minded to vote for approval for this one.
Thank you very much. Any contributions from this side?
Yeah, go on then. I might as well air my thoughts, which are not entirely complete. So what I am worried about is that this could be effectively a house that's suitable for a disabled person to live in today, and this, us approving this could mean that someone in the future is not suitable for a disabled person to live in. I accept the point that somebody could then change it back, but obviously, that's expensive and not everybody has the money. But then the other part of my brain is saying, well, if I was being explicitly told, by the way, there's a family of a disabled person living there now, and we need extra space because we've had extra children, I'd be saying, that's a really nice idea, and so you can still stay in a family home. So I'm a little bit dancing around in my head. If somebody else wants to speak for a couple of minutes, to give me a couple more minutes to decide, that'd be great. But that's what's floating around in my head, in any case.
Okay, so to try and sum up that, and what Councilor Bell said, personally, I feel like the policies that we have around bungalows are flawed, because we have a policy that says we would like to keep bungalows as much as possible for people with limited mobility, whether they be older people or disabled people or whatever reason. But then you have the fact that people can do a certain amount to a house through permitted development, which can effectively put bedrooms in the roof space, and as you kind of imply, that means that they could then take out any bedrooms which are left downstairs out without needing planning permission in the future. Having said that, we are bound by the rules that we've got to sort of respond to, and if the rules say that it's not creating any sort of damage to the neighbourhood amenity, it's not increasing parking pressure, and they're sort of working within the rules in terms of the space they're creating upstairs, then that's what we're doing. Like Councilor Bell said, I think this actually looks a lot better in terms of its position in the street scene. It's not quite in the conservation area, but that's maybe a very minor consideration, that it does look a little bit, the new design looks a little bit better. And there are lots of families, as you said right at the end of your point, who, not everyone in the family has limited mobility, and so you want to give everyone as much space while still having the option of having someone downstairs, whether that's multi-generational families or just one member of the family who's got limited mobility. So this sort of property with the split level and having the bedrooms downstairs does suit a wide variety of people as well. I've waffled. I hope you've had enough time now, because I'm going to ask George to take the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Councillors, again, please, could I ask you to raise your hand if you're in favour of the motion?
Thank you. That's unanimous. Councilor Bell could ask you to go and retrieve Councilman McLean, who can join us. The motion is passed, approval is granted. We will move on to item 5C, which is Western Road in Walberton, and I will ask Hannah to introduce this report, please.
So this application site is at 60 Western Road in Walberton, and it's for the proposed loft conversion, including a rear-facing dormer and a roof light. So this is the site location plan with the site in context. And then here's some site photos. So the one on the left is showing the rear elevation of number 60 and number 62, and the one on the right is... And the one on the right is showing number sixty-eight, which has a very similar sized dormer that was approved in two thousand and nineteen. And then this is just the view from Anston Road, looking at the rear roof slopes of those on the, on Western Road. So here's the existing elevations. Oh, sorry. The proposed elevations, the existing floor plan, and then the proposed floor plans, which show the dormer there in the loft space. So the key considerations for this is that no harm to the character or setting of the Wolverton Conservation Area is considered, MKCC Conservation were consulted on the application and following amendments have no objection to the addition of this dormer on the roof slope. The proposed dormer is also not considered to result in further harm to the residential amenity of neighbouring properties. And the impact on parking is considered to be neutral. It's therefore recommended that permission is approved. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have no speakers registered for this application. So I will ask the councillors if they have any questions of clarification for the planning officer on this. No one is jumping in. I have a quick question. Can you go back to the one where you, the picture that you showed of the existing dormer on, not the neighbouring property, but somewhere nearby? So in the conservation officer's comment, they talk about the concern that the dormer extends all the way up to the ridge line. They've changed it now, so it's lower. But that one, to me, looks like that goes all the way up to the ridge line and was approved in two thousand and nineteen. So have we changed our interpretation in that time, or did that one just sort of sneak through?
I'll take this one, Chair. I recall that application. It's a perspective thing. It's, I think it's effectively a, thereabouts a brick course below the ridge.
If I could just add to that, sorry. I think as well for the application that we have currently that we're looking at, the conservation officer just requested that it, it be more obviously set below the roof slope so that it was much clearer. So that's why this one, we went back and asked them to set it a bit further below and further above the use.
And in terms of the conservation area then, so there's a few of these, what I would call mini dormers there, is the assumption that a full width dormer across the back would interfere with the sort of conservation area sidelines? Because the, the comments all appear to be about, because it needs to be below the ridge line to protect from the sort of street view. But the width of that is obviously not kind of a thing. So I'm just curious why so many people have gone for these narrow...
I think it's dependent upon the application site itself. In this case, it, the conservation officer implied that it is preferred, that it's a smaller width, so that it sits on the roof so, slightly low. But there are examples, there are numerous examples, like you said, in the Wolverton Conservation Area of dormers. But it's also important to note that a few of those are undergoing enforcement cases at the moment. So all of the dormers within Wolverton can't really be taken into consideration. It, yeah, it's, I'd say it depends on the application.
Chair, remain. The, the short answer is yes. It's to ensure that any roof extension sits comfortably within the roof, roof space. The other application, two thousand and nineteen, application, I think originated as a much larger proposal, which was refused, if I remember correctly. So is the consistency in terms of it has to be small and comfortably fitting within the roof slope and set down from the ridge.
Thank you. I'm sure all of our YouTube viewers will appreciate the clarification. Are there any other questions from the councillors? Councillor Bell?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, within the, is there a conservation area appraisal for Wolverton? And if there is, what does the conservation area appraisal give as the key views within the conservation area?
So there is a conservation area appraisal. It mostly talks about specific building. It discusses quite a lot of the conservation area, but Wolverton has a lot of history itself. So it talks a lot about specifically, specific areas relating to the railway and specific buildings in relation to this application on Western Road. It doesn't specifically mention anything about rear elevations. The only part of the Wolverton Conservation Area appraisal, it just mentions that these back alleys are characteristic of the area, but it doesn't specifically mention anything about the rear elevations of these properties. And it talks about the roof slopes in general of these roads and the importance, the significance of uninterrupted roof slopes, which again is why we asked for it to be set down from the ridge line.
Yeah, I think that's pretty common for conservation areas of, in areas such as Wolverton in that generally the sort of Greek value and being able to view the properties from the front, from their front elevations is considered sort of more important, but what happens behind them is not really a particular concern in the conservation, conservation area appraisals, but I just wanted to check. So thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions before we move to the debate? No? Okay. In that case, I will propose a recommendation, which is item 5C, which is permission be granted subject to the conditions set out in the main report. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, councillor McLean. Who would like to speak first on this item? Or at all? No? Okay. Yeah, I don't really have any points. I think we've covered it. George, can we go straight to the vote, please?
Thank you, Chair. Councillors, please, could I ask you to raise your hand if you're in favour of the motion?
Thank you very much. I'm sure Mr and Mrs Townsend will be very pleased to know that their application is approved. That ends tonight's formal business at seven forty-five. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.